Good evening. I'm David Assad, the chairman of the zoning board of appeals for the city of Fall River. It's 6:00 PM on Monday, June 22nd, 2020. We are meeting at one government center in the atrium. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, dated March 12th, 2020, at 8:40 PM. Pursuant to Massachusetts general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Our recording secretary this evening is Brittany Farrier, the lady to my far left. She's recording an audio version, I believe. Yes, we're doing an audio version. And forever government TV, Alex Mello, Scott Cabral, and I think there may be somebody else over there, is recording both the video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now, and I'll make a public announcement of your intentions. So I guess you'll probably show something on the screen if you're there. But I guess you can probably record it anyway because you're at home. Present this evening, albeit remotely, are permanent members John Frank III, James Corkins, Attorney Carolyn Marasette, who's the vice chair, permanent member Dan Dupere, and alternate member Joe Pereira. Bill Kenny is the director of planning for the city of Fall River. He's the gentleman sitting to my immediate left. Brittany, have all petitions to be considered been properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the zoning board of appeals and Massachusetts general law, Chapter 40A, is amended?
Yes.
I declare the June 22nd, 2020 scheduled meeting of the zoning board of appeals of the city of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the board, including the petitioners or abudders, anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the chairman. The board's rules and regulations direct the board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this board is the zoning board of appeals. This board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts general law, Chapter 40A, and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the city of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the zoning board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the city clerk's office or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the city of Fall River zoning ordinances. The city charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning board specific matters at the end of this meeting. I disclose that an official copy of the four of the zoning ordinance is available at the city clerk's office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. I also disclose that a new, recodified edition approved by the planning board and city council in accordance with Massachusetts general law, Chapter 40A, Section 5, now with its yellow cover, is the official copy with the last ordinance being placed therein, 2019-23. I cannot participate in agenda item 02 this evening. Vice Chair Carolyn Marasette will preside on that matter. Are there any questions from anyone before we begin? Okay, having none, hearing none. We'll start with agenda item 01. Miss MSS1 Realty, 218-230 Rhode Island Avenue, lot E71 and 26. Special permit request pursuant to Section 86-41. That's a reference to the old ordinance, the new ordinance is 86-454, allowing construction of 23-foot-tall pylon sign with two double-faced interior illuminated signs attached to the pylon. The two signs, the two signed faces are seven feet wide by seven and three inches tall and six feet wide and three, three feet, four inches tall respectively. In addition, a three-foot-tall by 26-inch-wide backlit building facade sign is also proposed in the R8 district, lot size 10,062 plus or minus square feet. Good evening. Will you identify for the record, please?
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see everyone again. My name is Dan Agiar. I'm a senior project manager at SciTech Engineering with addresses here in the city, as well as Dartmouth and Marshfield. As the chairman had stated, this petition is a special permit request with regards to the real estate at 218 through 230 Rhode Island Avenue. That is the Alpha Dental Building that is located on Rhode Island Avenue between Tower Street and Orswell Street. Some of the back history of how we've gotten here is under a, two separate applications with another firm presenting. Relief was granted with regards to the construction of this dental office in the R8 district, and that originally started on October 17th, 2017. Then as recently as January 15th, 2019, they acquired the parcel to the north and expanded, had got permission to expand the dental office to, over the northerly property boundary line. Site plan review was filed for, again by another firm. Site plan review was approved. Construction began. The applicant then realized, through dealing with the building department, that no one had ever accounted for any signage within the parking lot itself or the building facade. So they came to me, asked me to put together this new petition. As you can see on the board that I have up here, and I think everybody has a copy of, we've shown the existing building. To the very northwest corner, we show the proposed pylon sign, and then along the middle of the front of the building, we show the facade sign. Along with our site plan was submitted, a fairly detailed plan from the sign company, which shows the size and dimensions of the buildings, sorry, of the signs being proposed, the pylon sign to the right, and then you see the facade sign that would be mounted on the face of the building, along the front of the building. So again, this is under a special permit. We're under that section that the chairman had stated allows the board, basically to grant any type of assigned permit through a special permit if they make the determination that it would not be detrimental and that the signage is needed for the business to operate and be seen and be noticed. What you'll find is that this is in an area that's mixed commercially and residentially. Directly across the street, we have restaurants, bars, office buildings, auto parts places, and our side of the street immediately abutting as our residential properties. But you know, when you drive down Rhode Island Avenue, the majority of it is commercially developed with the signs everywhere. So this is what the applicant is proposing for what they feel they need to be noticed when you're driving down that street. Not very large signs, 23 feet tall, may seem very tall, but as you can see on the plans that they've submitted, 23 is really not that tall, and the sign itself isn't that very big on top of the sign itself. This isn't like a 30-foot-tall pylon sign that's 20 feet wide that you might see from the highway. We're not looking for that type of visibility. This is just strictly if you're driving down Rhode Island Avenue. Excuse me. You will, you'll notice the sign and be able to get yourself into that parking facility. So we ask that the board make the determination that the two proposed signs are necessary. There was actually signage on the building that's been removed, and there is also an existing smaller pylon sign to the south of the property. But in, when you look at the site plan review that was approved, the new driveways and parking areas encompass the area of the existing signs, but those weren't noted at all on the site plan review. So that fell through the cracks. So we ask that you make the determination that the two signs can be constructed as presented, and if you have any questions specifically regarding the signs themselves, I think there's a fairly detailed plan, their location, or the surrounding neighborhood, I'd be more than glad to answer the questions.
Have the existing signs been removed already?
Yes.
And the existing pylon sign is removed when they did the driveway cut?
When I, at the time when I went out to do this work, the pylon, small pylon sign, ground sign, was still there. Now the building is basically stripped down and they're, they've been closed because of all this, so some construction has taken place.
So if the board chooses to grant, we may make a condition that all those previous signs be removed in these only zones?
Certainly, yeah. I mean, they're going to fall in the middle of the parking lot, so they're going to come up.
So let me just read for everyone for the record, Section 86-454, special permits under our sign ordinance. The zoning board of appeals may grant a special permit to construct a sign other than those permitted, provided the board finds that the sign would not be detrimental to abutting properties and is needed to adequately identify the business. So that's the standard that the petition is being brought under. So, any board members, any questions for the petitioner?
Yeah, lighting? Is it going to be hours of operation on and off, and does it have the dust-to-dawn settings and all that?
I mean, the board can, you know, grant whatever conditions there are. There are specific, if I read through the zoning, old zoning decisions. Let's see what they had with regards to hours. I don't see any specific hours for the first one. Chairman, I'm sure you have copies of them.
I don't, that's...
And I don't see, I actually don't see time in either one. I would, I would gather that...
John, do you want to make it a condition about the timing of the signs, dawn till...
Well, most of the new, most of the new technology, I think, I thought it was stated in the ordinance that it has a dust-to-dawn brightness mode to it, that they would shut down at a particular time, or they would actually get brighter at a particular time. I just don't know. If it's a dentist office, hours of operation, I would imagine they're closed by 5:00, 6:00 o'clock in the evening, so I don't know.
Yeah, it would only be during the winter that it would be beyond for evening hours. But I would easily say that the sign is not on at all when the office isn't open, but I do not know what those office hours are. That would have been under the initial application.
Okay. Anything else, John?
No, thank you.
Jim Corkins? Okay. Carolyn?
No questions.
Dan? Okay. Well, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? If there is, sign in so we can hear you. Alex, you would know if somebody wanted to speak in favor, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone up? I see something lighting up. Is there anyone opposed to, wait, there's someone. Sir? I don't know. Looks like the Golden Gate Bridge behind you, whoever that is.
Mike is muted on him.
I don't know whether he wants to talk or not.
Is it, maybe it's not for this petition?
I don't know. So is there anyone opposed to this petition?
Ask them to raise their hand. Ask them to raise their hand if anybody's opposed.
Okay, so if anybody, maybe that's a good idea. If anyone is here in favor of this petition, raise your hand.
Mr. Assad, this is Patrick Higgins with the Golden Gate Bridge. I am not...
Hi, Patrick.
...falling into speak in favor or opposed to any. I'm just to observe. But thank you for taking notice of my bridge picture.
All the way from San Francisco.
Thanks for participating. So we had Patrick Higgins, who is neither opposed or in favor. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard on this petition? All right, not hearing anyone? Can I get a motion? Can I get maybe a motion to address it by a special permit and have a finding that the sign would not be detrimental to abutting properties and is needed to adequately identify the business? If we can't get by that, then the petition is dead.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find that the sign is not detrimental to the neighborhood.
And do you find that it's needed to adequately identify the business?
Proper display, yes, needed for proper display of the property.
Okay. So all those in favor of Jim Corkins? Do I have a second of Jim Corkins' motion for the finding?
I'll second.
Second by Dan Dupere. All those in favor of that motion will do a roll call vote. Dan?
Yes.
Yes? John Frank?
Yes.
Yes? Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Carolyn Marasette?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. So that's five to nothing for that finding. Now, a motion to grant the special permit for the signs as proposed in the petition.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve and grant a special permit for the signs as presented in the program.
Okay. Jim Corkins makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Dan Dupere, seconds. All those in favor? John Frank?
Yes.
Yes. Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Carolyn Marasette?
Yes.
Dan Dupere, yes?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. So that petition is granted.
Thank you very much.
So what time is it now? Are we ready to move on to 150 Forest Street? Or is it not timed yet?
Just about exactly, quarter past 6:00, I think.
So quarter past?
Yeah.
Because we've got it scheduled for 5:20. We'll come back at 5:20, in case somebody wants to lie. I think we have to adhere to the numbers, the times that we've got here.
It's 6:17.
6:17, okay. So we're going to have a three-minute recess until 6:20, and that one will be chaired by Attorney Carolyn Marasette. I can't participate in that. And if you want me to leave the room, I'll leave the room. Probably should, don't you think? You should probably leave. I probably should, yeah.
Request pursuant to Section 86, 373, although under the new book it is 86-376, subsection C, to subdivide existing parcel into three lots, leaving an existing commercial building on one lot with a size of 6,308 square feet, leaving an existing two-family dwelling on a second lot, size of 6,592 square feet, and proposing to construct a three-family dwelling on a third lot, size 8,027 square feet, in the BL and ARS overlay districts.
Good evening. Again, for the record, my name is Dan Aguirre. I'm a senior project manager at SciTech Engineering. Here this evening on behalf of 150 Forest Street Trust, who is the landowner of this real estate located on Purchase Street, numbers 146 through 148, and 150 as well known as Assessor's Map Parcel N848 and 49. So currently, the property exists with, and if you look at the drawing that we have up for you, to the south of the property, the very southerly boundary, right up at Purchase Street, there is an existing commercial building, I believe it's a real estate office, with one residential apartment unit on the second floor. Behind that, along the westerly boundary line, there is an existing two-unit apartment building that exists in a barn structure. Both of these structures, according to the assessor's records and building department, were constructed approximately in 1840. So these have been here for a while, and the applicant is doing what he can to keep these two aging buildings up, renovated, and maintained. That all falls on what was, at one point, Lot Number 48. In 2008, for tax purposes, they consolidated the tax bills for one property as a whole, but for zoning purposes, these two properties would not have merged. Parcel 48 met the zoning requirements for itself, Lot 49 would as well. The deed still reads two separate properties, and no plan was ever done removing that interior lot line. That's why it's still listed as 48 and 49 with the multiple addresses. On the parcel to the north, which is an open grass kind of an area, there was a building there at one time that had been removed many years ago, and in the very back, you'll see shaded, there is a garage building that exists on that property as well. So what the applicant is doing with this petition or requesting, under the ARS overlay bylaw, where they give flexibility with the construction of multifamily buildings. What we've done is we've modified these two parcels to meet as many of the zoning requirements that we could for each one. For instance, the new parcel three, we'll start with the new construction, we've proposed a three-unit building that, in the underlying district, the local business district, would allow us to build this on a lot of 5,000 square feet, and then 1,500 square feet for additional unit, which would require a lot with 50 feet of frontage and 8,000 square feet. The building setbacks would be 12 feet in the front, 10 in the sides, 15 in the rear. So what we've done, even though the ARS overlay district allows us to reduce those square footages, as far as lot area, setbacks, frontage, we've made sure that this new lot that's being created meets the requirements of the underlying district. We could have changed the lot lines and not provided 8,000 square feet, but we felt it was important that when we look at this project as a whole, that we try and get as close to the underlying district as we can with each of the parcels. So parcel three, as being proposed, 100% meets the underlying district, exceeds 8,000 square feet, has 71 feet of frontage where only 50 is required, and we've proposed to meet every one of the building setbacks to the newly constructed property lines. We've also gone to the extent of ensuring that we meet the parking standard. Again, under the ARS overlay district, we have the ability, or you have the ability, to allow construction projects to move forward where off-street parking is done in a couple of different manners, or meeting the requirements for parking. Some can be onsite, the street can be looked at as well, and then other facilities within the area that we could rent parking could meet the requirements for the ARS overlay district. Again, what we did here was try to meet every requirement for the underlying district. So with a three-unit building, the parking requirements are two parking spaces for each unit. So this three-unit building would utilize six of the spaces that we have shown on the proposed plan, and we have a total of 16 actually, and we'll deal with the total numbers when we get to the end. Parcel Number Two is the existing two-unit building that's in the barn outstructure, outbuilding, that was built in 1840. No modifications to the building, other than general maintenance, will occur. So there's two existing apartments there. Again, we're not changing the non-conforming setbacks, which would be to the south and to the west, those are what they are, and the building setback to the front, you can see that we've proposed an eight-foot building setback, again, where only a 12-foot setback would be required. So that lot, even in area, we would need 6,500 square feet, we've exceeded that. The only diminished requirement for parcel two would be the frontage, where we've proposed 10 feet of frontage, and it would be coming down the existing driveway that's currently along the side of the building. So parcel two, under the ARS overlay district for multifamily housing, the only provision that we're seeking relief from, again, by a special permit, is the frontage requirement. Parcel Number One, which is the larger existing commercial building, again, it's the rental office, and that was also built in, I believe, 1840. So parcel one, again, you'll see that we've exceeded the minimum required area. So we're at 6,308, and we've also exceeded the required frontage where we're at 53. So on parcel one, the only relief we're requesting is you'll see the rear yard setback where we have proposed it being five feet instead of the 15. Now, again, the existing condition in between that two-unit building and the existing commercial building, that's already an existing condition. So parcel one, again, the only relief being sought is that rear yard setback as well. So when we look at this, and we look at what the ARS overlay district allows us to do, the applicant probably could have proposed additional units to be constructed because of the ability to do all of these things in the ARS overlay. So he hasn't been super aggressive with what he's proposing. We've met just about every requirement, even in the BL district, which normally, when we first looked at this, he thought he would have needed those few variances, not just a special permit. But again, as Carolyn stated, that section of zoning for the ARS overlay district does allow for some lax interpretation and changes. So when we look at this entire site, and it's important to know that the driveway and all of the parking areas will be held in some type of an association, or through easements, where everyone has the rights to utilize the driveway, and they will each be assigned a particular number of parking spaces. So as I stated before, the three-unit building would require six spaces, which it will be assigned. The two-unit building in the rear will require four spaces, which it will be assigned, and signage will be put up, basically stating, "These are your parking spaces." And then, the front unit with the one residential unit would require two. So that's a total of 12 spaces. We have provided a total of 16. That would leave four off-street parking spaces for the existing commercial, which is the real estate office. And when you look at the zoning requirements for that type of use, we've met those requirements as well. So again, even in the ARS overlay district, where we have the ability to utilize off-street parking, on-street parking, and other parking facilities, we made sure that our proposal, we could accommodate on our own lot. So even under the ARS overlay district, and what that allows us to do, the only things that we are requesting would be the rear yard setback for parcel one, down to the five feet, and the frontage requirement for parcel two, down to 10 feet. And the other two lots exceed the areas and exceed the required frontage for the district, which is only 50 feet. If you have any specific questions, it's a fairly, I won't say complicated project, but there are a few moving pieces, and every line is for a reason, and that was to minimize the amount of relief that we would need. If you have any specific-
So Dan, I have a question for you.
Sure.
It seems to be that it fits into the character of the neighborhood, but I am concerned about the density. So would all four, or would all three parcels be accessing the spaces from the same area, or would there be different entrances into it?
No. Everything will become, what you'll see is, and it's, can you see the drawing?
I can.
Okay. So right now, on the site, there is an existing driveway that comes off of Purchase Street.
Okay.
Okay, so it brings you up to this garage, and then it brings you back in front of that as well. So there's some paving that's back there. So this driveway, which we've proposed to widen a little bit to 22 feet, which is the zoning requirement for driveway, everyone will use this driveway to access their parking. So for instance, this two-unit apartment will utilize these two spaces and two of these three. This proposed three-unit building, this is the only location that we will utilize parking- That doesn't come off of the one driveway.
Okay.
So we've got two spaces here, and then in the rest of the rear of the property, what will happen is, once we have the tenant or the units, we'll decide which spaces make sense to use for each unit. I'm assuming these back, this back set would probably be the best to use for the building, and that way, these three and this one would be used for the front building as well.
Okay. Thank you, Dan.
But that'll be determined at a later date, because this may get done, again, some type of an association for dealing with plowing, trash removal, all of those things that need to take place on, you know, a group, because you're going to have potentially three different property owners.
Okay. All right, thank you for answering that.
Thank you.
Do any other members of the board have questions for Dan? All right, this would be a bifurcated hearing, so I just want to read to you the relevant part of the ordinance, 86-376, subsection C. In a specific case, the zoning board of appeals shall, after a public hearing, grant a special permit to waive minimum lot areas and height lot coverage percentage and yard requirements for multifamily development as cited in this code, unless, in the opinion of the zoning board of appeals, such waiver would be detrimental to the area and not in the best interests of the city. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? I don't know if anybody, has anybody there in the building can tell us if somebody's there, since I can't, from my position?
No.
No. And is anybody opposed to this petition?
We have one hand up.
Okay.
May I freely speak?
Yes.
Thank you. Hi, board. My name is Jim Soul. I'm the president of the Preservation Society of Fall River. I reside at 577 Rock Street here in Fall River, but I'm the president of the Preservation Society, and we own a budding property at 263 Pine Street. I think it's on the plan as N845. So our organization is opposed, as in a butter of 146, 148, 150 Purchase Street, the Preservation Society objects to the proposed special permit to subdivide the existing parcel into three lots. Given the existing density of the area, additional housing units on this one-way street would further increase traffic and parking problems for residents, and eliminate one of the only remaining options for creative use, open space in the neighborhood. The request to subdivide the existing parcel into three lots, leaving an existing commercial building on one, and a two-family dwelling on another, and with plans to construct a new three-family dwelling on the bacon lot, would reinforce the overcrowding in this already developing focal point of the downtown area. With the parcel in question's location in the Lower Highlands Historic District, in its proximity to the Circuit 1875 Church of the Ascension and the historic Bowen Bourne Cemetery, we believe a special permit for additional housing development would be detrimental to the interests of Fall River and its residents.
Thank you, sir. Dan, do you wish to respond?
If I may, please. As I stated during our initial presentation, the applicant made sure, and when we sat down to go through this proposal, we made sure that we met all of the density requirements with regards to square footage for the use in the underlying district. So we weren't relying on the ARS overlay district for our area count per unit. So we've created lots that exceed the underlying zoning that you could do as far as density goes without the ARS overlay, without the special permit. The only items, again, that we're requesting a waiver from with regards to the special permit is one for frontage, and that's to access an existing historic structure, rather than knock it down, and the rear yard setback, again, to the existing structure, so that that can stay. When we look at the abutting properties, and the density that those parcels have regarding unit count, we'll look at the first one, that is owned by the Preservation Society. It's an eight-family dwelling on 6,500 square feet. An eight-family dwelling would normally require 5,000, 7 times 1,500, so that's 3,000, approximately 12,000 square feet. So the density, you know, the density works for that neighborhood. I'm not saying that that eight-family dwelling should be on a larger lot. It works, the same way it's going to work on our parcel. When you look at the area, we've got such a mixed use of commercial spaces and apartment rentals, that's what the ARS overlay district was trying to promote, so that these buildings could be retained, maintained, or reconstructed as they sat, and also bring in an infusion of new homes, new single-family homes or new apartments. And the multifamily use, that's completely what's the ARS overlay district was trying to do. They didn't want to have single-family homes being constructed in these areas, and I think you can clearly see with the area calculations that are required for the BL, again, we've had petitions in the AOL district where we're down to, you know, 2,000 square feet of land area per unit, no off-street parking being able to be provided onsite, they're utilizing streets and parking lots down the street. We made sure that we could house as much as we could on this site, so that way, we're not relying on parking on Purchase Street. And as far as the density goes visibly, right now, yes, there is an open grassed area, but the owner of this land has the rights to develop his land. He shouldn't have the burden of having to provide the only open space in the lower Preservation District, or lower Historic District, on his land. I had spoken to Mr. Soul a few months ago, and they were interested in purchasing this property, and if they had chose to preserve that land area, that would be all well and good. I had approached the owner about it and gave him Mr. Soul's information. I don't know if any conversation had ever taken place. I hadn't heard anything else about it. I do know the applicant wanted to move forward with his proposal, and that's what we've chosen to do. It's taken a few months to get here, but we're here now. So I think this proposal clearly meets the merits of what the AOL district is, its intent was, and its purpose, and I don't even think we come close to the ceiling of what would normally be allowed with that overlay district.
Thank you, Dan. We're running a little bit behind, so is there anybody else there opposed to this petition?
Apparently not, but Carolyn, could I make a, raise a question and maybe make a suggestion?
Yes.
Dan, you mentioned that there would be maybe easements or some other arrangement for the parking access. Is this intended as a condominium development?
I'm not sure what route they're going to go with it. It could potentially go that route, and that will be handled at site plan review. Because we're building this number of parking spaces on a parcel of land of this size, this will require site plan review. And then, if it was going to be a condominium, then we would have no lot lines. There would be no purpose, and even, we could do what we wanted to do without the relief, because the lot is big enough to handle it square-footage-wise and frontage-wise. So if he knew it was going to be a condominium from the get, then we wouldn't even need to be here. This will give him the ability to look at it in a couple of different manners. If someone wants to buy the three-unit building by itself and rent the units, then they can rent the units individually, as he would do with the rear, or with the commercial building itself. So I can't tell you what will ultimately happen, as far as the logistics of how this property will be handled. However, I can tell you whatever easements and documents that need to be put in place to preserve everyone's ability to get to their parking, to keep the plowing done, all of those types of matters, landscaping, excuse me, that will be reviewed during site plan review.
Yeah, I agree that your, the question before the zoning board as to the relief you asked really doesn't depend on the ownership pattern, but it would seem to me that the prudent thing to do would be for the board to consider making one of the conditions of the special permit, that the necessary easements are recorded to assure adequate access to the different parking and serving the different buildings.
Certainly. And so what will happen is, they can't build any of the units on the proposed building until, one, we've done the subdivision plan, which will reference this approval if we get it. Then, once those lot lines are created, we will then submit site plan review. So absolutely, a condition that no parcel can be conveyed until the appropriate easements have been put in place. I mean, you would think it would only be normal practice that someone would do that, but some things do fall through-
You would think.
But you would think, but sometimes those things don't happen. So whatever provisions the board would seek, as far as a condition of making sure that those easements are granted, we're not opposed to that.
Yeah, I would recommend that the board seriously consider putting in a condition that, as you just described. And, you know, you could just say, "Well, it's going to go through site plan review," but as you also just said, sometimes things slip through the cracks. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny.
Yeah, I'd just like to check to make sure from Mr. Soul that the letter he submitted, that his testimony today covered everything in the letter that we have received today.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Cocken.
Okay, at this time, then, is there a member of the board with a motion regarding the first prong of this bifurcated hearing? Whether, if we do agree to a waiver, would the waiver be detrimental to the area and not in the best interests of the city? If we find that it is detrimental, not in the best interests of the city, that would conclude this hearing on the petition. If you find it is not detrimental to the area, and it would be in the best interests of the city, then we would proceed to the second prong of the bifurcated hearing.
I'll make the motion to say that it is detrimental, and I think the lot's going to be way too saturated.
Okay. Is there a second to Mr. Frank's motion?
Second.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote, then. All those in favor of John Frank's motion that it is detrimental to the area and not in the best interests of the city, John Frank, your vote is?
Aye.
Aye. Jim Cockens?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
No.
No.
And Mr. Pereira?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote it is not detrimental. So with that, I do believe there's not enough to proceed to the second prong.
Thank you.
24.
Evan Souza, 48 Smith Street Lot F1265, variance request to subdivide existing lot into two parcels, leaving an existing three-family dwelling on Lot One, fronting on Smith Street, and to construct a new single-family dwelling on Lot Two, fronting on Baker Street, waiving requirements in the A2 district. Previous request approved on July 19, 2018, has since expired.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, Dan Aguirre of SciTech Engineering, and board members. As the chairman had stated, this was a variance that was granted that has since expired. Due to some financing obligations, the owner was unable to move forward with the actual construction. But again, this relief was granted in 2018. We then immediately filed the subdivision plan with the planning board. That was recorded. There is a copy of that in your submittal package. We then very went, actually went to the very next step, went through the site plan review process, received that approval as well. The owner thought that going through those two steps would have kept his variance alive. When he went to go get his financing straightened out to actually build the structure, the title attorney pointed out to him that he had not sufficiently acted on the variance, which would have required some type of conveyance of the property or some type of construction activity, either putting in a water line, something to preserve the variance. So he apparently did not do that. He then came to me in February and requested that I refile the previous variance, identical relief, mimics the same subdivision plan that's already been approved and recorded, the same site plan review plan that was approved back in October or November of 18, would still be valid. We would just need to record the new zoning decision that would allow the subdivision to legally be active again. So again, it's identical relief. He had one home, you may remember, up on Smith Street, and the parcel went through to Baker, was actually two separate parcels at one point in time, did merge, and what happened on that was that the merger only occurred because on the Smith Street frontage, he only had, and I need to put my glasses on, 49 feet of frontage, and on Baker Street, he only had the 50. So if we had that one additional foot, it would have met a different criteria of the zoning bylaw that potentially the lots may not have merged with regards to the minimum size for the district. So we ask that you just basically reapprove or approve again the same relief that was granted back in 2018. That's all.
Thank you. I think you all have the previous variance with the conditions, or do you want me to read it? Let me read it. So the board voted unanimously, five to zero, to grant the petition in 2018, with the conditions being, no site preparation work shall be commenced prior to approval of the site plan by the Site Plan Review Committee, no building permit shall be issued prior to approval of the site plan by the Site Plan Review Committee, all utilities shall be separated, and an affidavit signed by the petitioner under the pains and penalties of perjury stating that all utilities have been separated shall be recorded at the Bristol County Fall River District Registry of Deeds prior to the sale or transfer of the property, but no later than one year from the date of the grant of the variance. And number three, there should be a minimum of two off-street parking spaces for the newly created lot. So those were the conditions that the board granted in 2018. Are there any questions of the board? Okay. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay, so I don't see anything lighting up on the screen. Can I get a motion to grant or a motion to deny?
Chairman, I move that we grant the approval based on the same conditions as had been previously approved.
James Cocken makes a motion to grant with the same conditions from 2018. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Dan Dupere. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor. John Frank?
Aye.
Jim Cockens?
Aye.
Carolyn Morissette?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. So that petition is granted with the same conditions that we had in 2018.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Is it 6:55 yet?
6:49.
So we'll wait a couple of minutes to 6:55, and then we'll get agenda item number four. Six fifty-five. Agenda item 04, Naomi Soars, care of Peter Salino Esquire, 1030 Dwelly Street, Lot G-1544. Special permit request to Section 86428 to reestablish a commercial use of an auto repair facility in the A2 district, lot size 7,136 plus or minus square feet. Good evening, Attorney Salino.
Good evening. For purposes of the record, my name is Peter Salino. I'm an attorney with law offices at 550 Locust Street here in Fall River. With me this evening, to my right, is Naomi Soars, who is the petitioner and now property owner. At the time of the application, she had a prospective interest in the property, but has since purchased it. The subject sits on the corner of Wilbur Street and Dwelly Street. It consists of a two-family home in which Ms. Soars lives with her son and boyfriend?
Yeah.
Fiance. On the site was an existing commercial garage. It's brick construction, there is a curb cut, and a concrete wall that runs down Wilbur Street to the corner of Dwelly Street. City records indicate that it was previously used for auto repair. The proposed use is auto repair. It would be nonconforming, it's an A2 district. Obviously, the building as it sits does not meet setbacks of any sort, and the proposal here is seeking a special permit under Section 86428 of the zoning ordinance. We submit to the board and the members of the audience that the proposed use would certainly not derogate or be detrimental to the neighborhood. It's a use that was previously made. I don't think it's more detrimental than that which is there now. The intention is that Ms. Soars, her fiance and son are going to run the business, and she can speak to the hours and kind of the proposed use. But in effect, I don't think it's an intense use, and I don't know of any objection, so I would respectfully request that the board grant the request for the special permit this evening. And I'd just like to turn it over to my client, Mr. Chairman, if I could, to give you a quick synopsis of what she hopes could occur there, for the record.
So currently, right now, my son is 15 and a half. He's learning to work on cars himself, did something that he would like to do in the future for a career. My fiance currently does do that with his father. My hours of operation, I'm just looking for like an eight to five, Saturday, half-day, Sunday, close. Just a family-owned, no employees. I just want to teach my son some value in work and hopefully give him a good career when he's old enough.
Thank you.
We have nothing further.
Okay. So when the last time, my recollection, do you know the last time it was used as an auto body shop?
It was about 15 years ago.
That's, I think, 15.
It was about that given date.
Was when that last, last time it was used, okay. So Attorney Salino, under 86428, abandonment or non-use. We have two paragraphs now. We have the specific language, a nonconforming use or structure that has been abandoned or not used for a period of two years, shall lose its protected status and be subject to all the provisions of this chapter, which would mean it has to conform to Chap. 2, the zoning district A2. Then we have Section B that says, notwithstanding the above, and then it's limited to a nonconforming structure that has been abandoned or not used for a period of two years, may reestablish its protected status upon the grant of a special permit by the Board of Appeals. While in paragraph A, it talks about nonconforming use of structure, while in Section B, we only talk about the nonconforming structure. So how do you get us to the use that you're looking for in this A2 district?
I think the use is ancillary to, or incident to the structure. What else can you use it for? Have you, have you driven by the structure?
A garage. I saw it, brick structure, has the door. My recollection, you know, I, not that I really need to do independent research, my recollection was, this property was before the board, and I thought Attorney John O'Neil had represented someone, where there was a gentleman who lived there and was using it as a machine shop or something, and then they sold the property off, but I couldn't find the decision. But the neighborhood is a A2 kind of district, three families, two families. But the board does have the authority under 86424 to grant a special permit to change or extend a nonconforming use in accordance with the section, only if it determines that such change or extension shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use to the neighborhood. So we've got five board members, and let's see if there's anybody in favor or opposed to it. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone opposed to this petition? Pat? No, Pat, you're just moving, okay. Members of the board, any specific questions?
I just have a question. 1030 Dwelly Street, is that the old Dwelly Street car wash from the 70s?
I don't think so.
Okay.
It's a residential neighborhood on the corner of Wilbur and Dwelly Street.
Okay, thank you.
John Frank, any questions?
No.
Jim Corkins?
I just a technical que, were they applied under one condition or one section of the bylaws? Can we apply a different section?
Yeah, I think we can, I think during our review of the special permit, because all they're looking for is under the abandonment or non-use, that's what we're kind of limited to.
I have one, I have one now that's.
Who's that, John? John Frank?
During your, during your comments, you said, what was the last time it was used as a auto body shop? They're not planning on auto body, correct? It's auto repair?
That's correct, Mr. Frank, strictly repair.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question. It's currently a conforming use now, correct?
Well, it's a pre, it's a pre-existing nonconforming just because of the size, but you have the two-family dwelling that is, the use, the use is conforming to the district. That is correct. So by, that's correct. It conforms as it exists.
Okay.
And just in case I wasn't clear, my client lives in the two-family house.
No, it's owner-occupied. It's, we got that. Dan, any questions?
Was it ever used as an auto repair shop?
Not that I know of.
15 years ago, it was an auto sales and auto repair shop.
Well, all right.
It was South End Auto.
So they did, they did repair on-site, because?
It was called South End Auto Sales and Repair.
Okay. Okay, Director of Planning, any comments on this petition that we should know about?
No.
Okay. So that's what's before us. I think we need to go through the process of determining whether or not it would be substantially more detrimental than existing, even though the nonconformity, it doesn't exist, it's a conforming use right now. So they're trying to reestablish under 86428 the nonconforming structure and the use that Attorney Salino says is ancillary, but I think it's part and parcel of 86428 to reestablish the use, not just the structure. But so if we, if I get someone to make a motion that the use would be, is reestablished, and it doesn't go, and it will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing to the neighborhood, then I guess we can go forward. If we can't get that motion, then we don't have to go any further. So do I have a motion to grant or a motion to deny that finding that the use will be substantially more detrimental than the existing use of the property?
Chairman, I move that we find that the use of the property for that purpose will not be more detrimental to the.
Would be more detrimental.
Would not be.
Would not be more detrimental.
Right.
Okay. So Jim Corkins makes a motion that the re-establishment of an auto repair would not be more detrimental to the neighborhood. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Who is that? John Frank?
John Frank.
John Frank, second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor? John Frank? Yes?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Carolyn Morissette?
No.
No. Chairman Assad? No. I'm sorry, that petition doesn't pass. Thank you. Have we passed that?
Seven outside.
7:10.
Can I go outside and come back?
Yes.
I can take a mask off, but I'm not.
Yes. I'm not the mask police. 7:10. Agenda 05, Manuel and Maria Ponte, care of Peter Salino Esquire, 94 Underwood Street, Lot M-2217. Variance request pursuant to Section 86428. Lot M 2217, variance request pursuant to Section 86466, under the new code, the new, so don't be confused looking for the old one, as I was, to erect a 20-by-25-foot carport waiving requirements in the S District, lot size 4,560 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening again, for purposes of the record, my name's Peter Salino, I'm an attorney at 550 Locust Street in Fall River. In this petition, I represent the petitioner Emmanuel and Maria Ponte. They live at 94 Underwood Street in Fall River, which is a single-family home. This is an after-the-fact variance request. My clients, without authorization from the city or appropriate city officials, went ahead and built a carport in their driveway at 94 Underwood Street. The variance request therefore becomes after the fact, it's effectively a mea culpa, we know it's there without permission, and so we're here more to ask for forgiveness than permission. The code requires, and the section that the Chairman referenced, requires that we have a 20-foot setback on a carport or a garage. In this instance, we only have 11 feet. It requires that the structure be six feet from a building, the structure per the plan is only 4.1 feet from the building. It requires that it be four feet from a lot line. This, this carport is only 1.2 feet from the lot line. Uh, we are in compliance with height requirements and square footage requirements, the height is 18 foot or under, and the square footage is 750 or under, and we're at seven feet and 500 feet respectively. I would submit to the board here that this is the kind of situation where the location of the carport, as shown on the plan, really is the only location it could go. So I think that notwithstanding the fact that this is an after-the-fact request for a variance, the only way you can really evaluate this type of a petition is to ask yourself, what else could we have done if it had been properly requested? And when you look at the restraints of the size of the lot, the location of the lot, I don't think there's anything else you could really do. If we were to try to meet, for instance, the requirement that requires the building to be six feet from the, the carport, you wouldn't be able to do it because you'd be in the neighbor's yard, you would lose that 1.2 feet, so you couldn't slide it that way. Similarly, you couldn't meet the depth, similarly, you couldn't meet the side yard. So, cards are on the table here, this is there, and it shouldn't have been, and we're asking that it be allowed to stay there. And I know from some of the record that we're going to have some opposition this evening from Ms. Moniz, I fully understand that, I've read her paperwork, and I understand the arguments, and I can speak to them once she makes them, I believe she's on, um, but I really have nothing further for this particular petition.
Looking at the plan and when I drove by the property, um, can't the, well, the carport exists, it's there, it physically is on the premises, I saw it. But if you had come before, or there was some planning, my, I couldn't really see behind it, but looking at the plan, it looks like you could shift it a little bit towards the house and shift it to the, uh, west a little bit, uh, to get more of a distance from, uh, the boundary line, the common boundary line between, between your client and Ms. Moniz, and maybe get some further setback from the street.
I think you could get a little setback, but I don't think you'd meet the sideline requirement.
No, no, I'm, I'm, you're asking for a variance, what I'm asking is, the, what I'm looking at is the, as I drove by, it looked like the southerly part was right at the, I thought it was your client's wall, but after looking at some of the assessors' maps, I guess the wall belongs to the abutment.
Right.
And that carport looks like it's right there, you're saying it's 1.2 feet, and maybe that's generous, maybe that's what it is, but if you shifted it to the west and to the, uh, north a little bit, wouldn't you get a little bit more, uh, space? I mean, I'm not, I'm not telling you how to, I'm just asking the question.
I think-
Had you had some, before it existed, and you said, let's plan it out, couldn't you have gotten like a foot or two more away from that wall?
Perhaps a foot or two, I think it's marginal, I, I still don't think, I don't think the end result would have been that different than what's on the ground.
Yeah. Okay. That was, those are mine, that's my comment, who's, wait a minute, who's that, Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
I was wondering if any efforts have been made to consider remediation efforts on the water runoff, like gutters or drainage system that would prevent it from, uh, affecting the neighbor's wall?
Uh, Mr. Corkins, to answer your question, my client is not opposed to some sort of gutter installation system. I believe that, uh, David Pont is on or will be on, and I have his email, email authorization to agree to a gutter.
Is that you, Mr. Pont, waving your finger?
Yes, I'm sorry, I-
No, no, I just wanted to make sure that that's you, if that's you, I'm going to let you speak, if Attorney Salino says.
Yep.
But, okay, Jim, was that, wait, wait, no, no, wait, wait. Jim, was that your only comment, was there some-
Well, I-
Anything further about gutters or some type of drainage system?
Remediation to eliminate the, uh, problem, or one of the problems.
Okay. John Frank, I, you fidgeting, do you want to say something? No? Is that, oh, ah, I see, the, the number, the people shift, Carolyn?
No comment.
Did you have anything that you wanted to add or say?
No.
Dan Dupere?
No.
Would you like your client to speak?
Yes, Mr. Pont could speak, please.
Mr. Pont, yes?
Uh, yes, uh, I, I did write Mr. Salino, I, I am, uh, uh, the owner's son, uh, my dad, uh, was not able to be on the call, uh, nor is he familiar with this whole process of the zooming, um, so I'm actually at work myself, uh, coming home from work, um, I stopped the car to get on the Zoom call, and, uh, I did write Mr., uh, Attorney Salino a, uh, an email, uh, if there is anything that is required for us to do additionally, um, we have no problems with doing that as far as speaking on the, because I did review, uh, the abutment's, uh, letter, uh, about the runoff, and I did suggest to Attorney Salino that we would be willing to put any type of gutter or system that would, uh, take the water coming off of the roof of the carport and allocating the water to a different part of my father's property.
Thank you.
Okay, is that all, David?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I see another, I see, is that Patrick Higgins' hand up?
Yes, sir.
Pat?
As, as you know, for the past several years, I have been a advocate for op- uh, open medium law, police, I guess is the best description. This is a situation where they're coming to get permission for doing something that was illegal to begin with, and in my opinion, they should not get a variance, and they should be ordered to take it down, and if they want to go with the legal requirements and come before the board and get permission to get a variance with the right, you know, like you said, with the, you know, the setback's not right, whatever, but this, um, this process, and this thing happened in Swansea, and they're currently in Superior Court over it, this process of, hey, we'll do it, and then we'll, you know, you know, it's easier to ask forgiveness than it is to get permission, and I'm absolutely opposed to that philosophy, and the fact that they built it, they should have known that they needed a permit or needed to comply with the law, and I, and I am absolutely opposed to this.
Okay, thank you.
May I, may I say something?
Wait, wait, no, no, wait, wait, just wait, you had your, I'll let you speak again, but let me, that was Patrick, there's another gentleman, I don't know.
Look at me.
Wait, wait a minute, I'm going to let you speak. Is that Aldo? Aldo, I'm going to let you speak, just wait a minute, let me-
How can I, look, look at my- Get over there, y'all, get over there.
Okay. Was, so, that was Patrick, nobody here? Okay. Anyone, anyone else opposed to this petition? Is that Alda Moniz?
Alda Moniz, here.
Okay, Aldo, you're on.
I'm on, um, I have photographs and letters, a letter to the board, and it's not just the water runoff, it's the noise, and it blocks my view to the street from my whole first floor on the north side of my home. This was built on a holiday weekend, it was built in two days, and I had to wait till City Hall opened to call, so this was done very quickly and without, without any thought as to what my, uh, property would suffer by this enormous giant garage. And I'm here if anyone has any questions.
Oh. Okay. Okay, I don't see anybody raising their hand or asking any questions. The two letter, the letter that you wrote, was that, so, was that after our packages were done? Because what, what I have in my, what I have in my package is a letter in favor from, it looks like Dr. John and Mary, uh, Malloy.
So those, those were dated for the original meeting?
So- So Aldo, your letter, it's dated July, July 12th, 20-
I'm adjacent, the Malloy's are not adjacent to this garage.
No, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute, ju- just listen to what I'm going to say right now. I said, in my package, there is a letter dated March 16th, 2020, from Dr. John and Mary Malloy that say that they didn't have a problem, they're in favor of the petition. There is a letter that I, because you made reference to your letter, there is a letter in the file dated July 12th, 2020, uh, and it identifies you, and it, you, this is where you talk about during rainy weather, the sound of the rain hitting the frame- Hello?
Yeah.
The sound of the rain hitting the frame often-
Can the, can the two ladies, Leah, please mute your microphone, because we can hear everything you're saying.
Okay.
Thank you.
With the quiet peaceful enjoyment of my property and often awakens, awakens me at night as my bedroom is close to the wall, I also fear that the structure will have a negative effect on the future resale value of my house. Uh, in addition to this, Mr. Pont removed a portion of the sidewalk adjacent to a manhole cover in order to expand accessibility to his driveway. Then, I recent, to whom it may concern, John Santos and Son Contracting Company, I recently inspected the stone wall at 80 Underwood Street, which is abutting the property at 94 Underwood Street, the carport that has been built is in such close proximity to the wall that it causes consistent moisture buildup that will cause continued deterioration in the future. And that signed by a gentleman by the name of John Santos, is John Santos and Son Construction Company, Inc., general contractor, but I don't see his Massachusetts license number on it, but he's got a card. Uh, then we've got some photographs, did everybody excited, did everybody get these in their packages? Oh, so you bought, it was only me who didn't get it, okay.
Mr. Assad, if I could speak-
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'll let you speak now, Attorney Salino.
Now?
Now.
Okay. So in reference and in rebuttal, I think the pictures are worth a thousand words. So, the Chairman asked me a question relative to the moving of the carport. The third, uh, sheet of pictures, which appears to be a photograph taken from Ms. Moniz's second floor, looking down in a northerly direction where you can see the roof of the carport?
Yes.
I think that accurately depicts as of July 12th, 2020, the situation on the ground, and I think that shows that you can't really move it back too much further, because you can see the concrete outcropping and the wrought iron railings.
And it looks like a shed that's right on the property line.
And a shed. Moreover, she just averred on the record here that the structure obstructs her view to the street, but when I look at the size of this concrete wall that she seems to have, I mean, the wall's opaque, so notwithstanding the structure, I don't see from the first floor of her dwelling how you'd see into Underwood Street in any event.
So let's get back to 48, Section 10, you're asking for a variance, shape, topography, soil condition, hardship.
All I have is lot size.
No, no, I got it, I mean, I, I just want to make sure that, I know that you understand it, Attorney Salino.
Right.
But for the larger audience about what's before the board and what the standard is for our review. So, the ladies up in the upper left-hand corner, John, you saw her name, I don't know who they are, if you'd like to speak, ladies, I don't know whether you're in favor or opposed. Hello? You can speak now, you can talk. No?
I don't know if my microphone's on.
Yeah, there you go. No ma'am, I can't hear you.
Your microphone is on.
I don't even know, it doesn't, it says it's on.
Yes.
Yep, no, we don't have any opinion on that.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Chip, Mr. Director of Planning, do you have any-
Whatever title you want, he is.
Whatever, no, whatever.
I, I just am compelled to say on behalf of the folks that work in the building department and the planning board and the zoning board and so forth in here in this building, enforcement is difficult enough as it is, and I, I think the board should think very carefully before rewarding somebody who goes out and, and takes, uh, this sort of action without seeking the approval in advance of the relevant authorities.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Attorney Salino, when I drove out there, I mean, there was a reference by Ms. Moniz that there was something on a man, I didn't, so I guess Aldo, I guess the question is really to you, I didn't see anything, uh, that looked like it was, uh, something with the, with the driveway or the, uh, or the manhole, where, where was I missing that? In the, there was nothing in the street and I didn't see anything on the sidewalk?
When our sidewalks were repaired, uh, Mr. Pont had never gotten permission to widen his driveway, but while the sidewalks were repaired, my son witnessed him removing the curb in front of the manhole. When I called the engineering department, they said that there was never, um, special permission granted to expand his driveway, that his driveway was not supposed to be that big, and also, it would not be allowed to remove curbs in front of the manhole.
Okay, in your, I think it was something that you sent-
That's the information I got from the engineering department.
Is it the fo- does the photograph that you sent in that shows the manhole cover?
Yes.
Is, is that what you're on?
His driveway was only, it was only one car wide, and there's been no variance granted at any time to widen his driveway because I checked.
No, no, that, that wouldn't be the zoning board, that would be the city council granting that permission, but the, uh-
Yes, there was no permission ever granted for that.
Well, let's be on my, our jurisdiction. Okay, thank you, Aldo. Is there anyone else in favor that I didn't see? Oh, I see Linda Pereira's name.
Alda Moniz is on, I just got it.
Is that Council Linda Pereira?
I'm going to watch it.
Oh, it's on now?
Yeah.
Is that Linda Pereira, City Councilor?
Uh, yeah, it is, I just wanted to watch the meeting.
Oh, so-
Thank you.
I got it, so you have no comment on it?
No, I don't.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Attorney Sal, is there anything you'd like to say, since everybody has exhausted?
I have nothing further, I would ask, if we could ask if Mr. Pont has-
Mr. Pont, I give you the last word before we start deliberating.
Okay, um, uh, on, on the, on the two count, I, I'm not sure what your title is, uh, but on the, on the two people that, um, kind of were leaning towards not, not granting, uh, the, uh, the variance, uh, I apologize on my side, my parents are elderly, uh, so they've been asking for this carport for the longest time, and I'm the one that went ahead and found the company, and I contracted with the company to get this to them so that they don't have to worry about cleaning the snow and all the, the rain and whatnot, because they're, they're elderly. Now, I did ask the company that, um, if any permit was required, you know, so I got bad information, I'm just being honest with you. So, the intent was not to create this much of a problem, because if it was going to be this much of a problem, I would have told my parents, hey, this is the process that we have to do, and we have to go, go get a permit, and if they denied a permit, then we cannot put the carport up. But I went on bad, on some bad information from a company out of North Carolina, the company, uh, sold me the stuff, and someone from Connecticut came in and put it. This was actually supposed to be installed back in October of 2019, and they delayed, 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 and then they came in at the end of like January or early February. So, our intentions was not to create this, this problem, um, and I understand the council's, council person's, uh, uh, response, uh, but, you know, i- i- if it's meant to be torn down, then we will ta- tear it down, but, you know, we're already into it a lot, and if it requires filing another variance to have permission for it to go back up again, I think that that's what we're going to pursue, but instead of making me tear it down and making me go get another variance, you know, I would like to ask permission, you know, I, this was completely my fault, and, um, you know, I, I hope you understand that.
We do, at least I do. But, I'll let you talk to Attorney Salino when this is over, what you, whatever action you want to take, if any, if anything needs to be taken.
Thank you for the, the council's time.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that wants to be heard on this petition? Can I get a motion to grant? Have they met the burden of proof, or can I get a motion to deny?
I make a motion to deny.
Carolyn Marissette, motion to deny, do I have a second?
Uh, John raised his hand.
John Frank, raise your...
All right, second.
Okay, deny, John Frank. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, we'll start with John. Dan Dupere?
Aye.
Yes, in favor, denial? John Frank, yes?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Carolyn Marissette?
Yes.
Yes. Chairman Assad, yes. The petition is denied five to zero. Thank you, Attorney Salino. Okay, so that's that one. We gotta give you this. Next agenda item. Is it 7:35 yet? No?
Thank you, everyone, for their time.
Thank you, Mr. Pont. Yeah, Brittany, she's got it down.
Thank you all.
Agenda item 06, Michael Amaral, care of Mark Levin Esquire, 0 Hancock Street, Lot D14127. This is a variance request to subdivide the parcel into two lots waving frontage in the R8 district. Lot size seventeen thousand four hundred and fifty, plus or minus square feet. Good evening, Attorney Levin, you identify yourself for the record and tell us what you'd like to do.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Attorney Mark L. Levin, with Law Offices at 138 Rock Street, 4 of M, Massachusetts. I'm here representing Michael Amaral, and I thank the planner and the board members for being able to finally get this together. It's, it's nice that you're able to do that under these hardships. The proposal actually is a fairly simple proposal. It's to divide two parcels of land, assessors' lots, that had been acquired by the estate's owners sometime back in the 50s. In fact, those lots back then for the zoning would have been 50-foot frontage in 5,000 square feet, but subsequent to zoning changes, it became an R8 zoning requiring 80,000 square feet.
Eight thousand square feet, 80-foot frontage?
Yes, 80-foot frontage and 8,000 square feet area. The proposal is to divide it in half and leave each lot with 75 feet of frontage, a de minimis amount of five feet from the, the actual zoning today. Now, the law under Chapter 48, Section 10, allows the board to make variances based on circumstances, on the shape, topography, in fact, the general character of that neighborhood as it's been established over the years. I will submit that the majority of the lots in this area have 5,000 square feet and 50-foot frontage. There are a few that have 75 feet and 6,000, uh, 1,000 square, sorry, 75 feet frontage in 6,000 square foot of area. These lots will, when divided, have exceeded the area required under the zoning, they would just be short five feet. All of the other requirements, dimensional requirements, front yard setback of 20 feet, side yard setbacks of 15 feet, and rear yard setbacks of 20 feet, will all be maintained. We're not asking for anything other than the waiver of a little bit of the frontage. Now, let's look at this lot compared to everyone else's lot. This lot almost contains 18,000 square feet of land. There's no other lot in this area, this neighborhood, that has that size lot. It's a very unusual size and, and shape. Another real important factor with this property is, and actually was brought up by the abutter where she said there was some water problems, this lot has a, a topographical problem where it slopes, and it drops from the southeast corner to the northeast corner where the abutter actually lives, about 10 feet. It's a 5.5 slope, which means the natural water that hits this property will flow down the slope 10 feet and keep on draining onto the abutter's property, and that's one of the complaints that the neighbor has brought up. By dividing this lot up, it allows the developer to fill, to spend the money to bring the fill up to grade, and in fact, with the planning board's input afterwards with site plan review, they will provide that there be drainage from each of the gutters on the property into separate infrastructure drywells on the property. It will actually improve any perceived problem that comes off this lot today to be an improvement. That's a very expensive thing, to fill up 10 feet of fill and putting retaining walls to make this work, but that's why one of the things with this big lot, to divide it, you're gonna have a house that's no different than the size houses that are in that neighborhood. They're still gonna be very similar, the neighbors will still have 15 feet away from a house, that if it was one lot, would one house built on this lot, just 15 feet away from them. But by doing this, by having this topographical problem we have, it affords my client to divide this up, provide the retaining walls that are necessary, provide the drainage in the property that would not actually be achieved, achieved as well as with one house, because you wouldn't have the space to put the drainage in if you're gonna put this centered in the middle or actually expand out for the whole lot. And if you were to put one house, someone would just spend this money, if it were just one house lot, and want to use that lot, this house would be probably the largest house in the entire area, it actually probably would be double the size of the house. So, the houses in the character of this neighborhood already, if you come down the street, they're all 50-foot frontages. They all kept down that street, and that's what the size were, 5,050-foot frontage. This lot, again, with 150-foot frontage and almost 18,000 square feet is an abnormality, abnormality of this area. Now, we think that the improvements to the property is gonna support a better neighborhood, it's gonna have raise and keep values of homes in that neighborhood, it's not gonna crowd anything more, because again, with 75-foot frontage, these, these lots are bigger than the houses already in that area, they just don't have that size, very few in that neighborhood have that. Now, I do have two letters, because they were submitted, and that's why I'm gonna shut this down a little bit, that one was by the developer himself, who, we submitted this on Friday afternoon, and one was by the owner. So if I may, I'll read their statement, which kind of brings to the same light of what I've spoken about. One is from...
Go ahead.
Yes?
No, so go ahead, read the letters.
Yeah, one is from Michael Amaral. My name is Michael Amaral.
That's you, Michael, right?
It's from him to the board.
Yeah, no, no, but he's, he's physically...
He is physically up. Hi, Michael.
So...
Do you want to read your letter?
Oh, good, you can read it, he's got it in writing, it's fine, good, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes. "The division requests is to create two lots that both exceed the area required for a house lot in the zone district. They are not undersized at all. The only issue is the frontage. Each lot will only be five feet short from the front yard requirement. The homes will be constructed to meet all setback requirements under the zoning bylaws. The required sideline for each dwelling under the bylaws is 15 feet from the property line." These lots will have dwellings with 15.5 feet from the sidelines, that's his design. The interesting aspect is that the current owner brought the lot separately and merged when the zoning changed. The character of the neighborhood has been set for many years, and most homes have only 75-foot frontage, that newer homes have 75-foot frontage, similar to the pros before you. The five-foot difference is de minimis, the lots would be consistent with the neighborhood lots that would have wider setbacks than the dwellings in the area. The lots will not use more than 25% lot coverage as required by the bylaws. If the lots had 80-foot frontage and had only, and had only 60-foot wide at setback, they would be legal. These lots are almost perfectly rectangle, maintaining roughly 75 feet width throughout the depth of the lot with two lots being created. The tall trees in the rear of the lot will be maintained. The building lot coverage for these two homes will not be any greater than what the bylaws permit for one lot, so there's, so there's no impact to the land in the neighborhood. In this neighborhood, two modest homes would keep up the values of these lots and the surrounding properties similar to what exists now and would conform better than one big home. Most of the lots in this area have only 5,000 to 7,000 square feet of land and 50 to 100-foot frontage. The first four homes on Hancock Street only having 50-foot frontage and 5,000 square feet of land, including one that was built in the 90s. This lot is almost 18,000 square feet with 150-foot frontage, its shape is so out of character as compared with any lot in the neighborhood. If the owners had subdivided them when they first bought them, they could have created three lots, since the requirements were 50-foot frontage and 5,000 square foot of area. Keep in mind, with five feet less of frontage, the house shrinks the width by five feet to maintain the legal sideline setbacks, so there would be no adverse effect, effect to the abutter or those in the neighborhood. These lots are served by sewer and city water, not septic system, as was indicated in a letter from the abutter. Also, the drainage would be improved, since right now it is currently raw land, which allows the natural flow to drain on the abutter's lot, which he is complaining about. Site plan review by the 4 of the planning board will require engineering, and we require, and will design the lots to prevent water issues, and all of the roof leaders would be directed into drywells to prevent runoff. Currently, it just runs downhill onto the neighbor's property. I understand the abutter may not like change, but this is, will improve the water draining off this property, and at the same time, improving the neighborhood, increasing values of the entire street by having two beautiful new homes. I honestly think the concern is for her privacy, but whether one or two homes would be built, it still will be built within 15 feet of her property line legally. If one home were built, it would be apparent that it would not fit in this neighborhood, as someone buying it for the purchase price would build a large home to maximize the use of the land and would cost, as it would cost to purchase, then to construct two, two dwellings similar to those in the neighborhood. I own a real estate brokerage firm in the city of, for almost 20 years, I'm a developer, and this would be a great addition to the neighborhood, it'd conform nicely. Michael Amaral, 657 Quarry Street, 4 of M, 02723. And I have a letter from the, the owner, the person representative of the estate, dated June 20th, 2020, from Madeline Whitney, owner of 0 Hancock Street, 4 of M, D14127, the executor of estate of Manuel Helen Viveras. Regarding the request to subdivide the land, 0 Hancock Street, 4 of M, to whom it may concern, I would like to set some facts straight. One, my name is Whitney, not Wheatley. Two, I am the owner, executor of the slot, and I am in charge of its disposition. The petition to waive the frontage and subdivide the lot is being proposed by our buyer, not myself. Three, there were other lots in the exact same area, one is the direct abutter, D1402, located on Norman Street, that have less than 80-foot frontage. This lot only has 68-foot frontage. This house is located in the same block as Ms. Mrs. Pont's home and lot. Mrs. Pont stated in her letter, quote, "It will change the landscape of the suburban neighborhood, one of the last quotes, good quotes, neighborhoods in the city, and will create more packed-in urban feel," end quotes. These homes by no mean have lower the value of the neighborhood, nor have they been detrimental to the quality of life in the neighborhood. In this neighborhood, you will find some numerous lots that have less than 80-foot frontage. She added a printout, she had given the assessor's card where they show they were 50-foot front lots, but I won't present that. Perk tests, Mrs. Pont's mentioned that her lot may not pass perk tests affecting the value of her property. This is not applicable in this case, her lot, as is ours, is on city water and sewer, therefore, no perk test is required, as no, there is no septic system. Six, regarding the price of the land, Mrs. Pont states that, quotes, "She and a Realtor priced it above its fair market," quotes, "unethical practice to be noted," parentheses, "because she can't get the egregious price that she wants for, as for one lot. First of all, the market will determine the fair price, and it's none of Mrs. Pont's concern. There is nothing unethical about it at all. The, as executor of estates, my duty and obligation to obtain fair market value of the property, wherever that may be." Seven, Mrs. Pont states that subdividing, quotes, "That smaller lot will create cramped and crowding surroundings," end quotes. Five feet in each lot will not create cramped or crowded surroundings, nor at an intercity feel. This is an older neighborhood, and it's mixed bag of different lots, it's a desirable neighborhood in different lot sizes, and not create an intercity feel at all. Eight... Eight, as for Mrs. Pont's other statements regarding drainage, fire issues, safety issues, I can't for the life of me see how feet, five feet will cause all these problems, never mind affecting the, quotes, "quality of life," end quotes, especially since there are existing homes on her block that have 80-foot frontage. While Mrs. Pont calls my Realtor and I unethical and greedy, her opinion, these accusations have nothing to do with this at all. This request is reasonable. We're talking about five feet per lot, not 25. I ask the board to take in consideration everything I've stated in granting a waiver regarding the frontage. Cecily, Madeline Whitney." So those are the two letters. Just to sum up quickly, again, we're talking about a de minimis area of, of frontage of five feet of an extremely large lot. The shape of this lot is so unusual to this neighborhood. The topography of this lot, as the engineer had stated in his submission that he, with this variance, is unusual to this neighborhood. They just don't have these drops. It just happens to affect this particular lot, which is unusual to the rest. So I believe that you have a reason to give a variance based on the shape, the topography, and in fact, the character of this neighborhood that was established well before the current zoning changes were made to make it an R8 lot. Thank you.
So the only change, the two lots will meet in all respects dimensional requirements except for frontage?
That is correct. No other changes.
Okay. That concludes your presentation.
Yes, thank you.
Members of the board, any questions before I get to opposition?
(inaudible)
I, I see, I see your hand.
Hello?
One minute. I'm asking the board before I get to you. Are there any board members that have any questions for Attorney Levin? John?
(inaudible)
Jim?
(inaudible)
Carolyn?
No.
Dan?
No.
Okay. All right. Now I'm gonna ask who's in favor of this petition. Is there anyone who's in favor of this petition? I see something. You're, okay.
The petitioner.
May I speak?
Well, who, I don't know who you are. Who?
My name is Caroline Viveras. Hi, Mark. How are you?
Hi, Caroline.
This is my, my parents' property that you've been talking about.
Okay.
Yeah. My name is Caroline Viveras. I actually, Madeline is my sister, Madeline Wheatley. She is also the executor of the estate as well. My parents set that up many years ago. I just have, I have to say, so there's pros and cons. My sister and I, we played on that land. My parents bought this house first and then they added on, they bought the other property which is on Hancock Street. So they could keep it as the way it is. Their intent was not to put houses there. And in fact, it's been that way for almost 50 years. I am living in the house now that I grew up in. I had lived in North Dartmouth on Copacab- off Copacab Road down Yellow Hill and I had a land under Chapter 61A to protect it across the street. So I'm all for that, which I am for this land as well. So I did wanna mention that. I also have some concerns and they probably don't apply, but I need to ask. How do you know if there's wetlands on that property or there isn't?
Well, that, well, that the building inspector will make those determinations.
Will determine that.
That's gonna be-
Yeah. It's a different filing.
It has nothing to do with this board.
Okay.
When you raised something, I have to ask this question. You said that your mother and father own a house on Hancock Street?
Not Hancock. No, it's, it's for Fall River on Norman Street because everything faces Norman Street.
All right. So you don't, there's not a house adjacent to these lots where we're dealing with-
Yeah, there is. The house I'm living in right now. I'm in the abutter.
The back lot, back side.
The back lot.
I'm talking about frontage on Hancock Street. Okay. Attorney Levin, this lot does not, but any of a lot owned by the Viveras family that would cause a merger to this particular-
Not with this lot, no.
If it's rear, if it's rear, it's not. Frontage on Hancock Street?
No.
Okay. Thank you. No, that's it. I just, you said that and our antennas went up. That's fine. Thank you.
Oh, okay. And there's also a elderly housing project over there. Can you build across from, from elderly housing?
Madam, I will leave that all to Attorney Levin. What's before this board this evening is this particular lot to divide it into two lots waiving frontage of 10 feet. Those other questions, I would suggest you take up with Mr. Levin in the privacy of his office.
Okay. Well, what I'm gonna say here too is, I understand where the Realtor is coming from and, but at the same time, he cannot determine how I feel about that land. If I want privacy, who wouldn't? And other things as well. There was, there was another thing that he brought up that I don't like change. An abutter may not like the change, but this will improve the water draining of this property.
Are you in favor of this petition or opposed to this petition, ma'am?
Well, this is my point. I wanna say I'm not opposed and I'm not for it. Can I do that?
Of course you can.
All right. Because I know my sister, we love each other and I know she wants to do the right thing, but I'm all for preserving the land, but at the same time, we could use the money because the house I'm living in, my parents had gotten a reverse mortgage on it and that has to, you know, be taken into consideration as well on how we're going to pay for that. So that's why, you know, we put the land up for sale and to see what could happen.
Okay, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. I just have one other question.
Go ahead.
Would the city, would the city be interested in it? Would you be willing to make a bona fide offer for that land?
Madam, this is not the, this is, this is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This board has no authority to spend the coffers of the city of Fall River.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Ma, this, there's the woman, the, the two ladies up in the corner. They've been talking and I don't think the microphone is on.
Hang on. We can't hear you yet.
You, you just gave a speech, madam, and I couldn't hear you.
Go ahead. Can you hear us now?
That's good. Almost.
All right. I am Mrs. Pont. I own the lot that abuts the one that you're talking about.
Okay. Can I stop you for one minute? You're the Mrs. Pont that wrote the letter?
Yes.
Okay.
I said in that.
So now, so now the floor is yours, madam.
Thank you. I am very much opposed to two houses being built on that lot. I've been in this area for 76 years, practically all my life. I've seen this neighborhood, how it's been changing. Across from the proposed houses that you people want, that he wants to build, there is already a truck repair garage. This neighborhood is changing. And when that, now those, those trucks are into repair, you can hardly get into Hancock Street. Hancock Street is very busy. I am not taking this as a personal thing against Mrs. Wheatley or whatever, but my point is if we keep changing the frontage rules all the time, I mean, what is the purpose of having these rules? Also, as far as the drainage is concerned, water will find a way no matter what. And I am at the bottom of that lot that is mine. I am concerned because when you're going to put two houses there, I don't care how lovely you're going to make them. You're still putting two houses there. You're putting, you're bringing more people into the neighborhood. And as far as the privacy is concerned, I mean, things change in life. I'm not opposed to it. But the fact of the matter is you're going to bring in children. Where are they going to play? In the street? In my woods? I don't think so. There are many things to consider here. This was going, this started off as being, selling one lot. Then apparently somebody got greedy and wanted more money. So now we're, now we're going to sell two lots and make more money. I am opposed to this very much. And as, as far as a hardship is concerned, this is gonna present a hardship for me. I'm going to have to pay someone to survey it. I'm going to have to pay to put a fence across it. And I guess I do know that apparently this, the day would come that this would have to happen. However, two houses? No. That is not going to beautify the neighborhood. Okay? It certainly isn't. If you have to sell something, you put one house, fine, but not two. One house will be enough to contend with. And also, I have somebody else here with me that is also opposed to this, as well as the person who wanted to take over my lot is opposed to it also because it reduces the value of my lot. I don't care what anyone says. I stated this. I have been, my family has been in Realtor in, for years. Okay? I've seen how all of these things have been done. My family practically owned a, a whole block of Norman Street. So I'm very much aware of how these things take place and it always comes down to one word, greed. Doesn't matter if you stick people in. It doesn't matter if you put people on top of people. It doesn't matter because once everything is finished and done, the Realtor goes off, the, everyone else just goes off. I'm left holding the bag. God knows what's going to move in there. Yes, I hope it'll be fine, ha, akidori, but there's no guarantee. And there will be children, definitely. So where are these children going to play? Let's be realistic here. Okay? I'm not, I'm not- Not to mention putting up fences because I'm on the- And then I gotta put a fence. Now let's hear from the other person.
I'm her daughter. I'm on the side of Caroline Viveras's house.
Can I have your name and address, please?
Yes. My name is Leah Ponte at 171 Norman, which is on the exact side of Caroline Viveras's house, which is owned, I believe, by her sister Wheatley.
Go ahead. I just needed to know where you were for the record.
I'm sorry?
I said, I just needed to have your name and address for the record. Please continue. Thank you.
Thank you. And what upsets me is this, she's going to, Caroline Viveras is going to lose a majority of her backyard as these, as this house, one of the houses will be coming in very far on the, with, with their land, which means I'm gonna have to put up a fence now. And that's gonna be a hardship for me. I'm a single woman, do not have a ton of money and a large fence, which I would go 10-foot with a, with a, with a, a 10-foot fence, is gonna cost a lot of money. And I don't feel comfortable with that. I don't feel, I mean, why, why am I being put in this position?
May I interrupt you for a minute? Did you see the plans, madam?
Yes. Yes, I did. We have the plans here.
No, no. Okay. So you saw the offsets that in all respects, they're, they're not asking for any variance or waiver from what the zoning requires if it was a conforming lot with the side yards and the rear yards. The only variance that this petitioner is asking for is waiver of frontage on the two lots. It has nothing to do with the side yards, rear yards. In fact, as I'm looking at the plan, it looks like the, the distance from the Viveras piece or the piece on Norman Street is 50, 54 feet, 54, 57 feet rear yard, but the side yards are 15 and a half feet, which is a half foot greater than what's required in that district.
In the lots.
But I just wanted to make sure you saw the plan, ma'am. That's all.
The lots are about 1,000 feet-
Well, I did. And that's, that's another question that I have.
No, no. I know the, but I'm just, the side yards. I'm more concerned about the side yards, what they were talking about. Go ahead, ma'am, please.
Yes. You have here Lot Area 2, which is behind the Viveras house. And I'm looking at the plans. I'm looking at Lot Area 2, correct?
Yes. The, the minimum lot size is 8,000 per lot. These are all greater than 8,000 square feet. Each lot is 8,711. The other one is 8,739 square feet.
But Lot Area 2 is going to go to the corner of my property and Mrs. Viveras's property and mine, and of course, my mother's, the abutter. The, the, the abutter. I'm looking at lot, it says Lot Area 2. I see where the house is gonna go.
Yeah, it's up in front towards Hancock Street.
Right. I see that. But then in the back, what are we doing with that Lot Area 2? That's the backyard.
No, no. That, that's telling you, that's telling you that the whole lot, Lot 2, as it's shown, has an area of 8,711 square feet. And that goes from Hancock Street all the way back to the Viveras piece, which has, let me see what the, let me see what the depth is. 115.95 feet deep. And from the rear of the house to the rear, to the rear yard, it's 54.7 feet. And on Lot 1, it's 56 feet.
My client intends to keep the trees way in the back, so they don't even see the property.
No, no. I just, but I'm hearing them talk about-
Yeah, I know. Understand.
And the fences. I just wanna make sure that they saw the, that they saw the plan.
I mean, I don't want people looking at the corner of Lot 2 where it connect, where it's cornered to my, my lot. And, you know, are people going to be able to, is this house going to be seen over my property? That's another, that's a concern that I have as well.
Okay. That's-
Yeah.
I understand. I understand your concern.
Let me interject. Are these going to be two-floor houses or one-floor?
I have no idea what the design of the houses.
You have no idea?
It says proposed dwelling. There's a size of the dwelling that one can calculate. Maybe Mr. Levin has the exact dimensions or maybe Mr. Amaral has the exact dimensions.
Michael?
If I, if I could speak, my name is Michael Amaral. And the first thing I do wanna let you ladies know is if it's one house, I can clear that whole lot and you can see what-
Mike, direct it to me. Direct it to me and just answer, just answer the question as to the size of the house, if you know, if you have-
They're, they're gonna be between 1,800, 1,900 square foot, Colonials with two-car garages.
Colonials. Colonial with two-car garages.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Does that answer your question, ma'am? The type of house that's going to be put there?
Does that answer your question? Unfortunately, it, it really presents another problem because, yeah, it's going to be crowded. I don't care how you worry.
The board, this board doesn't have architectural control. Let me just make that clear.
Please listen. John, I have a right to speak. I knew the original owners for 50 years. Okay? I knew them very well. We were all friendly so far. The original owner, Mr. Manuel Viveras, was a city engineer. And he would always say to me, now, I know the man is not here. Rest his soul, just to say what I'm saying, but everyone agrees with me on this side that, he always said, "Don't let anybody sell this land because if you do, you'll pay a high price in the future." And of course, I was very young at the time and I, I just brushed it off. But now I'm seeing that Mr. Viveras had a very high point there. You're gonna, you're gonna open up this lot. I don't care how big it is to you people. You're going to open up and put two houses there. One wasn't enough. You have to put two. Why?
Why two?
Why can't you put one house? Because the, the area, let's face it, the area is not fantastically looking. It already has problems. Why do you have to put two? Why not one good house, good-sized house with room for children to play, breathing room, no one is crowded? There won't be the many complaints, but what, no, you have to put two to make more money. This is the bottom line and I don't care how you stand with it.
Thank you, Ms. Pont. I understand what your objections are.
No, this is how I feel.
I, I understand how you feel. You've made that quite clear and you've used your three minutes up, ma'am. Thank you. Let's see if there's anybody else opposed to this particular petition. Is there anyone else out there who's opposed to this petition? Is there anyone out there who is in favor of this petition? Okay. So we've heard the opposition. We've heard in favor. We've heard opposed. The variance is dealing with 40A Section 10. Have they met the burden with shape, topography, soil conditions? They're looking for a waiver of frontage only. So motion to grant, motion to deny any, any particular conditions on the variance. If it's granted, site plan review is, is required, whether or not specific site plan review for the water runoff and drainage can be made, or if it's denied, it's denied. So motion to grant, motion to deny, conditions, no conditions. What do you want to do?
I would make a motion to grant.
Carolyn, motion to grant. Any conditions? Site plan review?
Right. The, the standard conditions.
Okay. If it's granted, no, no work, no, nothing until site plan review is done?
Correct.
Okay. Specific site plan review. Mr. Director of Planning, can we, about the water drainage, can we have site plan deal with that, engineering?
They typically would consider that as part of the site plan review, but again, it doesn't hurt to specify. If that's an important consideration for the board, they might put a, put in a condition that site plan review committee shall specifically consider and address drainage issues.
Is that okay, Carolyn, to include that in your motion?
That's fine.
To expressly include site plan review for drainage issues?
Yes.
Okay. So that's Carolyn's motion to grant. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, John Frank. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Yes. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins? Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Carolyn Maraset?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. So this particular petition is granted with those conditions. Thank you, Attorney Levin, thank you all for coming and participating.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, next, have we passed the time? I think we probably, huh? Seven fifty, can I go on to Agenda Item seven, or do I need to wait?
Ten.
Pardon me? What was the answer, yes? Yes, I can go right on to it?
Yes.
Okay. Agenda Item zero seven. Image signs. Thirty-seven fifty-one Purchase Street, Lot N seven eighteen. This is a special permit request to erect two twenty-four by twen- twenty-four-inch, is that it? Twenty-four-inch by twenty-four feet? Rooftop, freestanding, steel signs, backlit LED lights in the BL District. Will you identify yourself for the record, please?
Hi, my name's Derek Gates, I'm the owner of Image Signs. One twenty-six River Road, North of Mass.
Okay, madam?
My name is Jenny Fernandes, I'm with RLJ Group, located at thirty-seven to fifty-one Purchase Street, which is the building formerly known as the Townhouse.
Okay, so tell us what you'd like to do.
We're gonna erect, we're looking to erect two signs. One of them is twenty-four by, twenty-four feet by twenty-four. The other one is about eight.
Two feet, two feet high?
Two feet high.
By twenty-four feet long?
Correct.
Which is gonna be on the roof?
Correct, half-inch steel letters raised, basically welded to a half-inch steel plate, bolted to the top of the roof. The other sign facing the south end would be a little smaller. It's, we put it down a little bit, for size-wise, it's sixteen feet by probably about eighteen inches tall. But by proportion, the same thing. So we shortened it up a little bit in the midst of time.
Wait a minute, am I missing that part of it?
Is that an amended sign size? From what was presented?
Correct, I, at the time of this, I didn't get the chance to amend it.
This is the amendment.
We ran this permit in within one day.
All right, just so I'm clear. What I've got before me is special permit for rooftop freestanding signs, steel. And what's printed, or what's given me, is this, this readout that I just read, twenty-four inches by twenty-four. There's another, there's two signs?
They applied for two, and the dimensions have just changed.
They're, we applied for two at that same width, same height. But the second sign facing, sorry, south.
No, I'm just, I'm looking for, do you have, I don't have it in my package. I'm not trying to be. I've got this.
It should be two. I have this for.
Oh, two, erect two, twenty-four by twenty-four, so the dimensions changed from then to now.
Yes, sir, just, it came down a little bit, just because of size-wise of the wall and everything else in the midst of.
So, just so I got the right dimensions. So one doesn't change, twenty-four by twenty-four, twenty-four inches by twenty-four feet. And the other one is sixteen?
Eighteen inches tall by sixteen feet long.
By sixteen feet long?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got it. And they're gonna be LED-lit?
Correct, they're backlit LED, because there's a double wall of half-inch steel opening.
Yep.
In between, so the backlit will raise to another letter, that's raised up behind it. Half-inch steel, completely welded. I do have a little bit of pictures on my phone. If you do want to see a little bit of aspect of what they look like, I could possibly show you.
What you showed here is what it's gonna look like?
It's gonna look exactly what it's on the paper, but I can actually show you realistic pictures of more or less.
What do we, how, how, when will it be illuminated? All day, twenty-four seven, or?
No, nighttime. Nighttime and nighttime only, probably from the hours of, probably dawn.
What are your hours of operation going to be, do you know?
Hours of operation will be, for the cafe, will be seven AM until nine PM. For the restaurants, will be eleven-thirty AM to eleven PM during the summertime.
Wintertime?
Wintertime till ten. On the week.
So, so if we, so if it's till eleven, that gives you an hour buffer, there's no problem. You don't need to go to midnight or one o'clock or anything.
No.
So, eleven, so eleven o'clock to eleven, eleven to eleven would work?
So, we do have.
In seven AM to nine.
On the weekends, we will be open a little bit later. I mean, if it's an issue as far as the illumination.
I'm just asking you, tell me, midnight?
Yeah, so.
How would I ask for midnight?
Midnight, yes.
Okay. So if we go eleven AM to midnight, that will work?
Yes.
Okay.
Question wise, I don't know.
Go ahead, sorry. Keep going.
Apologies. And if there's any other questions on erection, of how the sign's gonna be installed, anything else? That's about it, very simple from my end.
Yeah, so, just to kind of give you like a little overview, because not many people have heard about it, because we've been working on the building for, this will be our twelfth month. It's a tri-themed dining experience, which means that we're within the building, on the first floor, we're gonna have a Townhouse and Tapas and Oyster, Townhouse, Tapas and Oyster Bar. So, an oyster bar. We're gonna have.
Is the sign just going to say Townhouse?
The sign on the top is gonna say Townhouse.
We only have to get granted for just the top sign. We were granted for all the rest of the signs, just on regular permitting. So we're already all set for all the rest of the signage that's on the faces of the building. If you look at the pictures.
No, no, you're only here for the rooftop signs. My only question is, is the rooftop sign, because I'm hearing other things, they will be in conformity with the sign ordinance? The rooftop sign will say Townhouse, that's it?
That's it.
Except on one side, on the east side, we are proposing the little box sign saying a little bit of everything that they are doing.
That's the south side.
Sorry, thank you, south side.
So, in addition to the Townhouse, the eighteen inch by sixteen foot?
Right, it has a little box underneath saying Steakhouse, Oysters, Cafe, Wine and Lounge.
That's gonna be illuminated too?
Correct.
Is that gonna be stationary?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And the reason that we went with these signs, just to let you guys know, one was for the beautification of the property, not to go mess around and put any standard signs that we could put, and put around the whole face of the building. We wanted to kind of preserve the historical part of it, make it look like an old-school building, kind of go the old-school theme of how they used to put signs on the roof, and stuff like that, and what the Townhouse looks like. And keep it kind of conforming to beautification-wise. So we've very minimalized on where the signage was, on the not very bright, on the lights, because they're backlit, and anything like that, so I don't think anything else should be hurting for light-wise.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Members of the board, this petition is a special permit under eighty-six four fifty-four. The Zoning Board of Appeals may grant a special permit to construct a sign other than those permitted, provided the board finds that the sign would not be detrimental to the abutting properties, and is needed to adequately identify the business. So that's gonna be the standard that we have to go through when we do this review. And I didn't mean to cut anybody short, anybody can ask a question before we get to who's in favor, who's opposed. John Frank, any questions?
Chairman, I just wanted to comment.
Go ahead, Jim.
I went by the site before I got the full plans, knowing the petition, but not the map. And I looked at the building, and I said, "What are they going to do? No one could see the sign." And then I got the picture of what it's going to be, and it greatly enhances the appearance of the building. And then, you know, I personally think it would be a nice addition to that building, and it would be in very good taste.
Okay, so we know that you're gonna vote in favor of it.
Maybe.
It could be. John Frank, any comments? Carolyn?
No.
Dan?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone here in? Pat, I see you looking at me, do you say anything? No, okay.
I have a comment when the time comes.
Okay, let me, oh, let me see if anybody's in favor, and I'll get your comment. Anyone in favor of this petition?
David, I'm in favor of it. I think it would be a good enhancement to that property and help make that lot, the businesses that are going in that location very successful. And I am, I am in favor of that.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else in favor? Anyone opposed to this petition? Okay, Director of Planning, I'll be happy to take your comments.
Thank you, it's really more of a question, I guess. Did you finish your remarks about what the programming for the building was gonna be? You were talking about the three different things on the first level. I was just wondering what's going on on the second level, that's question number one. Question number two, have you had any issues in your planning for this relating to parking in this neighborhood? Because it's a difficult area for parking, I wonder how you've addressed that. It has nothing to do with the sign, but it's sort of public information.
Right. So it's, I'll start with the, I'll start with the parking. As far as the parking goes, we do have twenty-two parking spots of our own around the building. We will be primarily serving, you know, having higher traffic during dinner hours, and after five o'clock, you know, most of the meters are not on. There's local parking lots around, and even Mechanics Bank has been very good with us. We do bank with them.
So you're gonna do some shared parking?
Some shared park, we'll probably do a valet, just to, you know, with the COVID restrictions, we'll have to see how that works out, but just to create more convenience.
And on the upper levels, what's gonna happen there?
On the upper levels, that's our phase two, so we do, we are going to be doing a wine and cheese bar. Right now, bars are not happening, so that's gonna be at a later time. So we're kind of trying to convert, convert it into more of like a lounge space and area. Also, on the second floor will be a small jewelry boutique.
I'm sorry, a small what?
A jewelry boutique. I've been in the industry for eleven years, and that's a passion of mine, so why not put it all in one? And we'll also have function space as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's it, okay. So, that's what we have before, is if there's no questions, can I get a? Jim Corkins, special permit, do you want to make a motion that the sign would not be detrimental to the abutting properties, and is needed to adequately identify the business? Or do you want to say it doesn't meet the standard?
I would, I find that the addition of the sign would not be detrimental to the neighborhood, in fact, would be an enhancement.
And it would, and it's needed to adequately identify the business?
Correct.
All right, so that's your motion for the finding. Do I have a second on that motion for finding? Second by Dan Dupere, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? John Frank, yes?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Carolyn Maraset?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes, okay. So, as far as granting of the special permit for two signs, one, can you live with these numbers, twenty-four inches by twenty-four feet, and eighteen inches by sixteen?
I already made them.
Huh, he's already, okay, so he's already made them. Twenty-four, twenty-four inches high by twenty-four feet long?
You're lucky.
Eighteen inches high by sixteen feet long. Backlit LED signs. Motion to grant that special permit. Do I have a motion?
Motion to grant.
Motion to grant by Dan Dupere, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim Corkins, any discussion on the motion? All those in favors, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Carolyn Maraset?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes, okay. So the special permit is granted for the two signs. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Guys, would you like a peek? I can give you a sneak peek.
No, we're all set, thank you, sir.
Sneak peek, sir.
Could you just use this door here? Yes, thank you.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, you can.
Chairman, I'd love to see this development happen. To anybody who wants to listen.
Okay.
I'm really happy to see this project moving along, because it's right in the middle of this Purchase Street, dare I say the word, Streetscapes project. That's become an unfortunate, almost a dirty word in Fall River. I was involved in Streetscapes project for Purchase a couple of years back. I've had a little vacation for a couple of years, but I'm back. And I'm very happy to see that some of the elements, a lot of the elements that we had hoped for in the Purchase Street, Streetscape, came to fruition. There were others that didn't make it because of budgetary issues, and there are further enhancements that someday might be done. But I gotta believe, and I hope, that one of the reasons that you have invested in the building in this location is because of what the city did to set the table for private investment, provide the infrastructure, the ambiance, that makes it more likely that something like this can survive. So I think when policymakers are thinking about Streetscapes, maybe they want to use a different word, but I think it helps, and I hope it was part of your decision. So thank you for doing this, and I wish you a lot of luck with it.
Can I respond?
Sure.
Just with some good news.
Well, that's up to the chairman.
Please, go ahead.
Yes.
Seeing we're doing public service announcements now.
So, thank you, I do want to announce that, you know, we are very excited. It was very challenging going through this COVID crisis. And moving forward, my parents do own a restaurant, have owned a restaurant in eighty-five Columbia Street, Barker Restaurant, since nineteen eighty-three. And so these have been very tough times, but we are very close to opening now, and we're very pleased, you know, at the ruling. And we want to announce that we are hiring now thirty positions. And we've already had ten applicants in one day, so we're very excited to do that.
Do you want to give them the number to call? So, all of you out there watching it, if you want to apply for a job, dial.
I was wondering if you were gonna take the number.
Just visit our Facebook, it's Townhouse on Facebook, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay, can I go now to Agenda? Agenda Item number one? Eight, eight-ten, it's now a little bit past that.
Eighty-twenty-six.
Okay. Sewer Division, City of Fall, Fall River. Nine ninety-four Jefferson Street, Lot D twenty-nineteen. A variance request to install a fourteen-foot by thirty-three-foot pump station, waiving minimum lot area frontage, front and side yard setback requirements in the Commercial Mill District, raising the existing pump station lot size six thousand four hundred plus or minus square feet. Good evening, will you identify yourself for the record?
Yep, Paul Furlan, the Administrator of Community Utilities for the City of Fall River.
Mr. Furlan, I gotta ask you a question that's been on my mind since I saw this petition. Why are you here before the Zoning Board? You represent the City of Fall River, the City of Fall River is the sovereign. What do you need permission from this board for?
So, the building inspector recommended that we come in front of the board, since we do not meet the sideline setbacks, the frontline setbacks, or the frontage.
All right, so you're here because the building inspector told you to come here?
Correct.
Okay, tell us, tell us what you'd like to do.
So, what we'd be doing out there is constructing a pump station, reconstructing the pump station. Currently, the south-end pump station services over a thousand homes within that area. The pump station was originally constructed in the nineteen seventies to take less homes than that in the industrial area in the nine-nine-seven, nine-nine-four Jefferson Street area. So, the new, we have a tight lot that we have to work on to keep the existing pump station running during the construction of the new pump station. The building that we're proposing does not house any pumps, or any motors, or anything. That is strictly a generator enclosure, as well as electrical. And we're also required to put a bathroom within that building. So that's what the actual building is for. The majority of our utilities will be underground, so we're doing submersible wet wells with a, with a, with a underground vault chamber, and also an underground meter chamber. The site, as I said, we have to work around the existing pump station, because we can't bypass it for the eight months during the construction. So, that's why we're here in front of the board. The, as I mentioned, the building, the, what we would be looking to waive The, as I mentioned, the building, the, uh, what we would be looking, uh, to waive, based on, uh, the building inspector's, inspector's recommendation to come here would be the minimum lot size, uh, in that area, it's recommended for ten thousand square foot lot size. Uh, we have a sixty-four hundred square foot lot size. The minimum frontage required is one hundred feet, uh, and we have eighty feet, uh, on two, two separate streets, uh, it's a corner lot. The front yard setback is ten feet, uh, and we are providing three-point-eight feet. The minimum side yard is six-point-seven feet, and, uh, excuse me, required to be ten, we're providing six-point-seven feet. The, uh, within this area, this is a commercial area, so there's no residuals, we're not, uh, abutting against any residential buildings. The structures that we're building, this, this structure will be a, uh, red brick, um, structure. Uh, we're currently building one up on President Ave, over behind Newport Creamery. It'll, it's almost the same exact design, just different colors than that building that we're, uh, we're building up there. So it will match everything in the surrounding area. One of the reasons that our front yard is, is so far, uh, is so short, is the, uh, street actually has a fifty-foot right-of-way coming through that area, which is fairly large for a street right-of-way, so that pushes the property line back. Uh, again, you know, we could, uh, the, the other options that we had was to take and construct, as you've mentioned, we are a utility, we are the City of Fall River, so we do have rights to use the right-of-way as well, so we could construct all of our underground facilities in that right-of-way, but that wouldn't be the best, uh, the best for us for servicing in the future. So, that's why we decided to come to the board and ask for, uh, relief on the, uh, mentioned.
Okay, thank you. Members of the board, any questions about this project? Give me a minute. Okay, members of the board don't have anything. Anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition?
Mr. Chairman.
Pat, no, I'm gonna let you speak, Pat, I just wanted to make sure everybody else, go ahead. It's all yours.
I just have a couple of questions, is, is this building gonna be a permanent structure, is it gonna be a temporary structure, and is it gonna be ADA compliant as far as the bathrooms?
Uh, it is a permanent structure, uh, we're not required to have ADA bathrooms within this structure.
How are you not required to comply with the Americans for Disponibility Act in a building that's operated and owned by the City of Fall River?
Because it is not open to the public. It is a generator structure and electrical, electrical housing. The plumbing inspe- the plumbing inspector requires us to put a bathroom, we've gone for variances on that bathroom, the state Plumbing Board has given us a variance to put one non-handicapped bathroom, unisex bathroom with no shower.
Well, I can understand the no shower, but I still think that you should have the, um, the handicap bathroom, but that's my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If he's got, Mr. Higgins, if he's got the, the determina- no, no, if he's got the determination, satisfy yourself, if the.
I agree.
Is the plumbing, plumbing, the plumbing inspectors from Boston gave you the waiver?
Uh, they gave us a waiver on, on the President Ave building, uh, and they said we didn't need to come back.
So, so if Mr. Higgins wants that, you should make that available to him, so he at least knows how, you know, what your statement is based on.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Pat. There's some, is there anyone else in favor or opposed to this petition? Okay. Can I get a motion to grant, motion to deny?
Motion to grant.
Motion to grant by Dan Dupere, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim Corkins, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Dan Dupere? John Frank? Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Carolyn Marasette?
Yes.
Attorney Assad, yes, Chairman Assad, yes. So, unanimous vote, five yes, you're granting permission to do what you want to do.
Excellent, appreciate it, thank you, Commissions. Board, Board members.
Citizens, what, you're still talking, I didn't mean to cut you off. So, citizens input, is there anyone out there that would like to address the board?
Mr. Chairman, this is Pat Higgins.
Yes, Pat Higgins.
Citizens' input, I would like to commend the board for their adding the Zoom access to the agenda. The only suggestion I would give for future meetings is instead of, um, I mean, the times, I understand the reason for the staggered times, but I think you could, um, enhance your agenda by adding, or when the previous determin- um, case has been decided, so that you don't have to take as many breaks during the, uh, meeting, and, uh, have to sit here and dead, dead here, dead silence, while you're waiting for the next agenda time to come up. But, I think you guys did a great job, and, um, under the circumstances, I commend you, and, uh, like I said, you're doing a great job, and, um, the only, the only suggestion I would give you is on the agenda, instead of saying seven-ten, seven-thirty-five, whatever, put seven-ten, or when previous, um, agenda item has been concluded.
Thank you very much.
That's high praise, Pat Higgins, thank you.
Like, yeah, you don't, you don't mean, uh, David, you're doing a great job, thank you.
Could I just say, the, the reason, uh, Mr. Chairman, for the staggering of the times in that fashion, was so that we wouldn't have a lot of people queuing up. If you tell them it's gonna be eight-ten, or when we get to you, they'll be there at quarter-eight, you know?
Yeah, that does make sense, I'm sorry, yeah, that does make sense.
Okay.
Not everybody is, um, participating remotely, so, yeah, that would make sense. But Attorney Kenny, you're right.
Very good. Uh, so the minutes from January and February are not ready, so we can't approve them. Can I, is there any new business that we need to talk about? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Dan Dupere, second?
Second.
Second, Carolyn Marasette, all those in favor?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Corkins? Carolyn? Dupere?
Aye.
Assad, yes, the Zoning Board of Appeals for June twenty-second, twenty-twenty is hereby closed. Thank you all for attending.